We have people that are leaving early because there are concerts and all sorts of good stuff. So, is, I just got to steal this, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I needed the agenda. Adjustments to the agenda, because we do have people leaving early, I'm going to move the executive session up first. I apologize to those in the audience. And are there any other adjustments to the agenda?
There's only one other thing on the agenda.
There's only one other thing. Okay, 3.0, Audience and Communications.
These are my fabulous food service directors are here.
Excellent.
And my fabulous day.
They came for the.
And the fabulous network administrator.
That's right.
Fabulous high school principal.
And the fabulous law principal.
Good audience.
But you know them.
No, exactly. Anything else? Well, on that note, let's leave. We have a motion to enter executive session for negotiations.
So who?
Second?
Second.
Okay, we're going to go just right next to where you. We're going to talk for two minutes. There was no, amongst ourselves, there was no action taken in executive session. They just need to load up the. Tonight's presentation is the third in our budget presentations. We've had Student Services, we've had, are we starting with Student Services? Or are you just getting the?
I'm just, yeah.
Okay. We've had.
He's just helping.
He's just helping. Instructional program, and then tonight is Day's favorite night because we talk about buses. Right, buses your thing?
No, they're not my thing.
I thought they were your thing. We.
My thing is, seven questions about buses at town meeting and one question about math. That's my thing.
That's your thing, okay. Duly noted. We're on to the budget recap, Food Service, IT, O and M, Central Office. Should we be passing stuff out? Not yet.
You know, I sent this out as a pre-read. This is your normal function, change of function, details. I'm not really sure where, if you'll have it. Do people need this?
Yeah.
It's a hard copy, yeah.
Do you think I will print that?
For show, for their project.
You'll need your magnifying glasses. A link in the.
Mine's not going to work tomorrow, but I'm amazed at how well it's been working.
So that sheet really, I went over with the Finance Committee pretty well, but I think some of, especially board members who've been around for a while, I used to see that level of detail, so it's there. If you have a question, we'd be happy to answer it. I wasn't planning on going through it line by line.
Can we ask questions about specific lines?
If you want to.
I can answer.
Doesn't look like.
No.
And it's not showing the top.
Can we just put the screen up and do it against the whiteboard?
Well, it's not showing the top line.
Oh, it's the top line anyway. It's still going to come.
We can pretend.
It's like I'll deer in the headlights. It's not showing the whole.
Probably.
Is there a way to.
Well, sometimes.
It's showing nothing now.
Yes.
Yep.
No, the board chair just declares you out of the session.
Okay.
At 6:15, we're declared out of the session.
The chair declared us.
Because you can't vote inside the exact session.
Well, it's your rabbit's rules. You just declared us out.
There we go. Yeah. Man who does it all. All right, so we're going to start with the budget recap and a couple of updates, and then we'll get into operations. I know you're all here for operations because he doesn't like budgets and food, things like that, but we're going to start with a sort of an overview. Remind you to put the desk, cameras, everything. It's the old fashioned way, snap. Okay, so this is just a reminder, where we left the budget, there's been no change to these numbers, so I'm just holding it at the 4.6 percent. It does include the Go Get in special ed. So a couple people have asked me to try to put this view together. This is, you know, starting from the 20, from the current budget down to the next year's budget, which is a $3.6 million increase, and what's driving it. So you can see about a third of it, even a third of it is in salary. Down here in the bottom is special ed, 30 percent of it. Here's the health insurance increase, and sort of everything else. One thing you'll notice here, these are the new positions that we've been talking about. On the presentation we did two weeks ago, we said that the net was $94,000. The Finance Committee had a very strong opinion that we shouldn't be using retirement savings to offset new positions, so we stripped that out. So the 94 went up by $140,000. It also includes a position you're going to see a little bit later tonight in transportation. So this is the value of, the net value of the district initiatives. Clear? All right. So, some updates from the last time we talked. Happy to say that special ed team and administration got together, did some scrubbing of the numbers, and they were able to successfully find the $250,000 in Go Gets. Some of it, I exactly want to say, some of it was, listening to the conversation, some of it were situations where perhaps one, a child wouldn't need a one-on-one, but maybe a two-on-one, but some leaning in, and remember, this is all, this is all about getting to the metrics that we want to get.
Right.
We just talked in executive session about statewide health benefit decision and the impact that will have on the budget. The equalized pupil count, we did get those numbers as a first pass from the state, so two higher than George Martin and I figured out, so we're very proud of ourselves being able to land that number pretty quick. That's not final, final number, they just know that budgets need that number, so they sent it out. It'll fluctuate. I haven't actually changed my spreadsheets because that, last year we had 14 versions of that, all with like, within two people, up and down, up and down. So I'm just holding with what I had. When I show you at our next meeting in January, we're really supposed to be talking about tax implications, I'll sync up then with the, with the state's most solid outlook.
Frozen.
That's what they say, and then they change it 14 more times, but the one that they call frozen, that's the one we use. And then finally, last time we met, we just got the Tax Commissioner's letter. That's the important part for you all, is it's the numbers that will eventually set the, used in calculating the tax implications of the budget. I am going to show you those numbers. I'm going to pretend I'm Colleen for a minute, because we happen to agree on this one, which is that when we go through the tax calculations, the number that this board affects on tax calculations is the net ed spending per equalized pupil count. That's the number. The yield is a state number, and I'm going to show it to you, because you should see it, it's going to impact tax rates, but you have no control over that number. I'm always a little queasy when you take credit for something when it's beneficial, because you also have to take credit when it's not beneficial, but I would do want to show you the numbers, so, next slide. Here's our calculation, our equalized pupil count, you can see it's up quite a bit. Here's our net ed spending, which hopefully is the same as on the previous page I just showed you, I mean, our ed spending, which is what I showed you before. There's the 4.6 percent increase. Here's our revenue assumptions, still at the 4.6. So this is your net ed spending per equalized pupil, $16,701, which is the 3.9 percent increase. So that's the number that you all at this table can say, that's, our decisions affect that number. The Tax Commissioner's yield goes up to 10, remember, that's roughly, in really big pictures, the property tax, that when you put it with all the other taxes that go into the ed fund, a dollar would raise, a dollar on the tax, property tax rate would raise $10,883 per pupil. Now, nobody's in the, just to be clear, that's not some kind of an average for the state, it's not some kind of a target for the state, it's what a dollar on the tax rate will raise. So it's really important. So you take the 16, you divide it by that number, and you get a dollar fifty-three and a half on the tax rate for, versus a dollar fifty-one last year. So it's two cents, two and a half cents on the tax rate. If legislature holds that yield number, which we won't know until May, by, we've all, it's been going on for as long as we've had this yield number, rather than trying to guess what the legislature's going to do, we've always had a practice in this district of sticking with the Tax Commissioner's yield number. So that would show a 1.7 percent increase on the tax rate for the numbers that we're working with today. Okay. That's before the incentive, remember, all of our, everyone in the community is still getting the incentive, which started at 10 cents and is going to zero, so we have, you know, the six cent incentive becomes four. Gives us a little bit of a headwinds every year, so that's before that number. So instead of a dollar forty-five, it'd be a dollar forty. Any questions?
Thank you very much for doing this.
It, I have like, whole pages to explain this, which I will post so you can see it if you're just too embarrassed to, to say you don't follow it, but, unless you guys have been here long enough to be able to at least follow the numbers. So, 3.9 is still really the number that we're, that we're working with as a board, 1.7 is the tax rate, given the Commissioner's yield. Okay. So, we are going to spend a couple minutes now to go through the positions. Last time we met, the board asked for some information about positions that are here. The one that you don't, this is just from two weeks ago's presentation. The one you don't see here, there's a $40,000 halftime bus dispatcher, I'll be talking about later, but it's on the next slides, we're trying to just keep them all together, so. So Elaine, you want to try to talk to them?
So, well, at the last budget meeting, I heard several of you say that you would like to see those positions that are adds to the budget, shared with you in kind of a decision packet format, so that's what we've done. So here are the headers that I thought you asked for, Need Served, or Board Goal, Impact of Not Including, and the Effectiveness Metric. And honestly, we've had about like, three days to figure this out. So, for early literacy supports, remember, this is providing early literacy for a school that has lost its Title I services. The kids are still there, the needs are still there, this backfills that, because they can't receive Title I funds anymore. So the impact of not including is those kids don't get those services. And the effectiveness metric, I think is probably, lives in our common assessments. We have a lot of, I said reading level, but there are lots of different assessments that we could look at to see, you know, if we didn't fund this, what happens to those kids? If we do fund it, do they stay on track for, you know, improving their literacy skills? Any questions about that one? The next one was Essential Arts and STEM, remember, that was around Williston schools and efficiency of delivery, because we are actually paying people to drive back and forth between the schools, lots of lost time, because that counts as time. So I've never really calculated, but I bet we pay somebody like, we pay a person for a full FTE, and really, their teaching time is more like an 80 percent FTE, because they've got this time in between that they're just going back and forth. So it addresses that, and it also, because they, at Williston, they did a lot of work around their master schedule last year with their program council, and they came up with a lot of things that they thought would make schooling much better, at the middle level in particular, but they couldn't do it because they've got these people that are moving back and forth. So that was what that one was about. The STEM position really is about providing equitable opportunity for all students, and it also right sizes the Essential Arts ratios. And there are a couple things that factor into that. One is that if one of our schools has a declining population, that affects the ratios everywhere else. So, nothing changed, except that now, because they've got lower numbers overall, their ratios look a lot better, and there's no way that you could address that by, you know, saying, okay, well, we'll have a .95 phys, a phys ed teacher, we'll have a .95 art teacher, we'll have a, that just doesn't work. So we're always going to be in this place that we're, we're going to be looking at that bottom line ratio and say, hmm, is that the right, is that close enough to equitable? So that's what we were looking at. And combined with that is, you might remember that last year when I did all of that Essential Arts work, that people do things differently. Bottom line, pretty equitable, but there are some schools that have a whole lot more STEM, just because of how they do things, than other schools. This position, the point eight, that's 1.8, would fix that, so that we would make sure that we had STEM in all of our schools. Coding work with students by a digital learning leader who could do that work. So we, it's really a package, the whole thing is a package working together. It also provides for the principals who maybe are interested in moving things around, some time to make that happen, because again, our employees are real people who have been our employees for a long time, and we, we have to be opportunistic about where, when we make big changes. We can't just say, oh, next year we've decided that we're, you're gonna, we don't need you for .4, right? So, this would provide that. The impact of not including that is, in Williston clearly, the continued inefficiencies, and the inequities of opportunities that just persist, and are kicked down the road, really, because I'm sure I'd be coming back next year with a similar thing. Effectiveness metric, assessments recommended by the digital learning leaders, I'm putting that on them to figure out, like, how would you do that? But I can tell you that, like, just in coding, for instance, I was in a third grade class in Heinsburg today, like, you probably all saw on the news, that Representatives Lippert and Yantachka were in that classroom along with Peter Drescher from the AOE, to watch an hour of code. Those kids were so proud of that. I walk in, so like, this year on Thursday mornings, I'm in one of the schools, and one kid right away said, it's Mrs. Pinkney, and another kid said, I'm not making this up, why weren't you here when we did the Hour of Code? Because they're so proud of it, right? They want to have people know about it. So I think that we're ready for that. That's the thing, we're ready for it. So, I don't, yes, go ahead, Lynn.
So the STEM piece, so I, I guess, I just need clarification. When we looked at Essential Arts, everybody had the same category of Essential Arts, except for Williston, they had the, what did they call it, TEC Ed, and.
That's right, yes.
And the, what is it?
Family.
Family, okay, facts, family and consumer. So when we're adding this position, this position isn't addressing facts?
No.
So that, so there still is an inequity in programming, we're just increasing, we're actually starting a new program at, at the two schools that are going to get the STEM?
It would be coding.
It would be, okay.
And we would be doing it in Williston too, because it's really not happening in Williston either, but there is a position there that could be doing it.
Okay.
Right, so there, so there would be some re-looking at the job descriptions of certain positions to make that happen, even in Williston. And in Shelburne, lots of conversations about how to make it happen, and two, three-year plans, and looking at grants, and, you know what I mean? There's a, in that particular slice, there's so much bundled up in there. Behind the scenes, stuff I can tell you, stuff that we're working on, but the idea is that we do think that in this day and age, our kids in our K8 schools ought to be getting direct coding instruction.
Okay.
This provide, this would provide that, this would make sure that we got that.
So this is separate, you're going to, you're calling it like, a new Essential Art, that we're.
Yes, we're putting it on a different line, we are, because we don't, we've never captured the DLLs as an Essential Arts, that's a program piece.
Okay.
So, yeah, in my charts, when I'm, you know, crunching my numbers, it's a different, it's a separate line.
Okay.
Any other questions about that? I know that one is full of stuff, but.
Oh, and just as a comment, I know that Free School, the 3B program at ABS, has just started a coding, a coding lesson that they're now getting, jumping into. So I.
I don't mean to say that people aren't doing it, like.
No, no, what I mean is that I do think it is at that point, though, that it's, it's coming and it needs to be.
It's ready for it, yeah.
Yeah.
Right now it's haphazard, it's, you know, if you happen to have the bandwidth, if you can figure it out in your schedule, but there is, because there's, you know, no FTE attached to it, there's no requirement.
Connected to this, do we have professional development related to coding?
I'm going to turn that to Bonnie.
It is happening, and so as Elaine mentioned, that last week was the Hour of Code Week, which is, I believe this was the sixth year, there's millions, hundreds of millions of people worldwide who all focus on, let's spend an hour learning about coding during this particular week. So there's a big effort, and there are an amazing amount of material, so teachers are, that's their way of kind of getting their feet wet with this whole topic.
One hour a year?
No, not one hour, so what, what essentially happens is, it sparks interest.
Right.
And it opens this door, and more and more people are aware, like, oh, we can incorporate this into so many different ways in our class at all times of the year, so there are things happening.
So currently, it's an awareness, but there's not a coordinated professional development activity related to.
Right, and I would say that currently, you might have a teacher that says, oh my God, this is great, I can, I can integrate this in this, we can do this, I can find this time, and you might have another teacher that says, oh, that was fun.
Right.
And so there's an inequity that just happens because we hire human beings, and they have different interests, and they have different skill sets, and, so, whereas, if we say, we have this, now that changes it, right? Now it's like, this is an expectation, the training is for everyone, there's somebody who's, you know, doing some direct work with teachers, and there is an expectation of follow-through. And like, I'm going to use the word, word haphazard, it's not that it's not happening, but, you know, your child might or might not get it, any year of his or her schooling, in the way we're, it's structured now.
Kind of like where we were 25 years ago with technology.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But as I said in a previous board meeting, the, there's a whole team of us working on developing the next cycle of the Digital Learning Plan for the district, and this is a key piece of it.
Yeah, so I put that up there, I said, on it, right? Same thing. So there's work doing, being done around that. Megan, I'm going to let you speak to the Heinsburg Behavior Systems Specialist.
So this is up here, even though it's a cost-neutral ad, but it's up here because it's a new position, so this would be a support staff position in Heinsburg, because they're the only school that doesn't have a support staff person to augment what we call a safe harbor structure, which is part of our system of support for kids who are struggling, that all of the K8s are working on, as is the high school, although the high school looks a little bit different. And the, this, the position is offset because we are using grant funding Medicaid, I talked about this in my, in my presentation, we're using Medicaid funding now to fund the professional positions associated, so now the cost to bring this up is, is recaptured that way. The impact of not including that, there would be an inequity in Heinsburg, they wouldn't have, you know, part of the rationale of that program is the professional works with teams, and coaches, and analyzes behavior, and they need someone to deploy in a short-term kind of construct, so they wouldn't be able to do that. And effectiveness metrics, similar, we would use our common assessments, which right now, in the area of behavior, is our engagement data and our Swiss data. Want to go ahead and mix?
Oh, yes, Colleen.
You probably shared this already, but I need to be reminded of the safe harbor structure. Can you provide a definition?
Sure, so, it's a, it's a link in our, or Cassandra would call it a step in our ladder of supports for kids who struggle. So most people are familiar with the term Planning Room, it's where kids go, they, you know, get in a bind, they have a referral, they go and they make a plan, and they come back. And then there are kids who are repeat visitors to the Planning Room who need something different in a short-term way, they don't need a different educational experience, but they need something short-term. They might have behaviors that are very dysregulated, they need some more analysis of their plan, so safe harbor is that structure that has both the expertise to help analyze, but also has a place for them to go on a short-term basis, and all of our schools are working on that. That is, that is something that is fully implemented in a couple places, and is being worked on in other places.
And I remember you describing that to us before, and I'm forgetting if that's a common term for people across the state.
It's definitely not, and in fact, it's not a common term within this district.
But it will, we will have a common term.
And it might not be safe harbor.
For sure.
Well, I'm just thinking, it's, you know, one of those terms that we could have a glossary that goes along with our budget, that.
Well, when we have a real, when we have a unified term for it, we will definitely plan to do that.
And even a unified descriptor.
Yes.
And, and the goal is to get the kids back into a regular classroom?
Exactly, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the inclusion on this chart is, is that because the grant funding could disappear? I mean, it's Medicaid, so it's.
It's on here because it's a new position.
Okay.
So when, in the, in the slide that has the ads, that's not organized like this, it says, Safe Harbor Restructure, we didn't include that here because that is just a funding change. This is an actual, well, it's not up anywhere, but this is an actual new position, that's why it's up here.
And because it's funded through the Medicaid.
The Medicaid funds something else, which leaves then money to pay for it, that's what makes it.
And that's a reliable source of funding.
Yes, Medicaid is, yep.
And Megan, I just have a question. So when you said that there will be a place for kids who are really struggling to go, do you mean within the, within that school, right? Not outside of the school, but within each school?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
In Charlotte, they call their program Delta, this is what we mean by, at some point we need to land on a common name, and we will, but.
We all agree.
Yes.
So the next two, I didn't see the leadership and CVU guidance, when Adam did his big process with his program council and his leadership team, he had probably a dozen decision packets that came to him, and unanimously, these were the top two. He's the expert to speak to this, I'm going to let him, but I want to say that, like, when we had our budget meeting, and he was talking about this, there was no one sitting around that table that wasn't convinced that these are necessary positions for the high school at this juncture. So, Adam, you want to talk a little bit about each one?
Yeah, I brought a little more material focusing primarily on the school counselor, because I think there are some more questions about the counseling position and the house director position. I apologize for not getting to you sooner ahead of time, I only printed out. I'm going to skip.
Yeah, yeah, 12 board members.
We're not a full board.
Next up, I was about to ask, I'm sorry.
I can help.
We can divide.
Yeah.
We can pass it out whole.
I'm happy to do that.
So I think there are some questions about what exactly it is that a school counselor does, and what are the responsibilities. So at the front of the packet, you'll see the description of our CVU Direction Center, and the list of services that our, that our Direction Center provides. You've got counseling at the top, not a surprise for a school counselor, so you're looking at academic counseling, social emotional counseling, crisis intervention, prevention, those types of things. You see consultation with faculty and staff, future planning, classroom guidance, so implementing a counseling program, coordination and referral with external services, of course, academic advising, program manager, and professional development. On the next page, you should have a list of appropriate and inappropriate activities for school counselors, I won't spend a lot of time on that, because the following page, I think, is probably the most interesting. This is a comparison, an apples-to-apples comparison amongst counselors and guidance programs around the state. So this does not include SAPs, this does not include social workers, this does not include other Howard Center workers or mental health clinicians. So you can see that CVU is at the bottom of this list with about 300 students to each school counseling.
Can I ask the dreaded question? So EQS defines it as 1 to 200, but. Hugh, can I ask the dreaded question? So EQS defines it as one to 200, but that includes SAPs, social workers. Does the 300 include SAPs, social workers?
No, this entire list is just straight counselors.
Straight counselors.
Licensed counselors.
Licensed school counselors.
And did you include the second page because, do our school counselors do things that are inappropriate activities? Not, not, not that it's bad, but it's because they have so much to do, they end up doing stuff with that. I, I, that probably didn't come out right.
No, they are not inappropriate.
No, I didn't mean that they were inappropriate.
They do do some. The one thing that I, that I took a look at, things like building a master schedule, they do help out with that. So that's something typically one of guidance directors would be doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just in the interest of cost, sometimes when you add support staff to a group of professionals, it can bring them up to focus on what they really should look at. Did you look at potentially doing that also or?
Through support staff?
Yeah.
Yes, thanks, Bonnie. So a couple of things I wanted to get into was, first of all, like what, what really are the challenges to help you understand that a little better? And then get into some of the models that we could pursue because I think the last time I said, well, we still need to do a little bit more intensive work to do something that's really thought out. And I got a feeling from the board that, that I was like, yeah, we'd like a little more detail on that. So I sat down with a couple of counselors this week and said, so if I'm trying to help the board understand, you know, what your day to day is, is like, can you, can you walk me through, you know, some of the, some of the challenges that you're facing? And, you know, the four, four pieces that really rose to the top is this, this concern that our counselors are coming with. There can be times where it can be like, like if they break an appointment with a student, it can be up to two weeks until they can meet that student again because their schedules are so back to back. And we have some students here who could probably weigh in on that. It's also really this desire to be proactive with students, to engage with, not just a, a guidance curriculum, but simply just getting to know students. So one, one of our school counselors was talking about that her goal was to sit and have a meeting with every single ninth grader in their house. And she's only met with 10 of them so far. In a proactive way, there's been many more response issues that they've had. So I said, well, tell me, tell me a little bit about that. You know, I get why that concerns you because you want to have a relationship before you get into, if something serious comes up, you're talking about some really sensitive stuff. It's helpful to know each other ahead of time. So this is a description I got from this, this week, and I shouldn't be laughing, but it was, as the description was going, I started to understand a little better. So for example, the past week and a half or so, all of our school counselors have been trying to meet with 10th and 11th graders to connect around pre ACT and PSAT scores. A lot of times our students can get those scores without interpretation. It's pretty confusing for students and can also be, it can be hard to see some of those scores without having an adult shepherd you through that. So the, those meetings typically take between five and 15 minutes. Do you remember doing this?
Yeah, we just did that. It was not that long.
Okay, so about like five minutes or so or?
Yeah, maybe a little less.
Because you have to go back to class, so it's.
Okay, so then, the, right, so you're being pulled out of class to talk about. So they thought it was between five and 15 minutes, typically around 10 minutes, although it sounds like it's a little less in your example. And they're trying to, each counselor is trying to meet about 90 students to do this. So if it's 10 minutes, the math's pretty easy there. 900 minutes, which works out to be about 15 hours just to go over those results. So they're attempting to do that this week, which probably is not the best move in early December. So I was saying, one of the counselors saying that she, she kept having to break appointments with students. I said, well, well, tell me why. She said, well, you know, one, one time I went to meet a student, I got a note from a teacher that a student had given her that was indicating self harm. So that was pretty serious. You have to follow up on that obviously right away. Counselor contacts first call, contacts the parents. First call went going to home because of safety reasons. So the counselor had to call back and organize for the family to meet the first call here and had to organize the first call in a room in school. I mean, it's not atypical in schools for this type of thing to happen. As this counselor is managing that, I had sent out an issue, so I feel bad about that, to the full faculty saying, please, as we're ending semester, communicate with school counselors about any student who is in danger of not passing a class, particularly focusing on seniors as we're looking at senior year. So the counselors are then charged with looking at students who might not be passing, struggling in classes, and they got all this data from teachers. Simultaneously, we have a December 15th and January 1st college application deadline. So the counselor is trying to manage that while at the same time attending a core team meeting and an EST meeting to discuss a student who might need to go into special education testing. And then finally, of course, there were several students wanting to see the counselor, looking at second semester class changes and hoping to shift through the year. So as you might imagine, their plates are quite full with 300 students. To try to remedy some of that, so with the addition of a counselor, there's the idea I talked last time, one model is a response counselor. So someone who can help triage some of the crisis moments that invariably come in any given day, particularly before the holiday break. The other idea is there could be a, could there be a ninth, ninth grade counselor who is working with students as they come in, transitioning them to the building and then transitioning them into the other houses in 10th and 12th. So those are two models. The third model that we're investigating would be, do you diverge from the house model and look at simply dividing our student body by 1300 and going by, going by last name? So we need to investigate that because that's a model. And then there's, the, the fourth model would be more of a lead counselor who also has a caseload. And they would take on things like AP testing, SATs, ACTs buddy program, attending Directors of Guidance meetings, master scheduling, NABEons and MMS supports, running the newsletter, managing driver's ad, which could be a full time job for anybody in our community. So that's, those are some of the models, some of the challenges. Hope that clarifies a bit.
That's, that was really helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I just, just for clarification, so last year, for example, we sat in a number of disciplinary hearings where we recommended students go out for counseling and then come back for counseling, but it was often, seemed like there was a challenge to meet that need in-house. To have, with this, do you see that this person's in that role too?
Probably not. No, I think we would always want to be referring out to either specialized, it could be specialized drug and alcohol counselors.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't mean in place of. I mean, sometimes even coming back to, to do the proper follow up and to make sure that things were done according to that. Like, yeah.
The number, the number one thing that one of the counselors said to me is, it's not just about dealing with crisis. It's about knowing folks beforehand and then to not follow up when there's been, been something always, it's just, it's not right. It doesn't feel good. And that, that would allow more time for that. I said another hand.
We don't need to get into the weeds of how you organize your work. I just want to clarify that the 1.0 FTE would be in addition to what's listed in the Direction Center currently?
Right. And we should, I actually wanted to go over that list because there are a couple of positions that are part time positions or external positions.
Okay, so would this increase the total that you buy 1.0?
Right. So you'll see like, for instance, two, you'll see two counselors here listed under Chitlin. That's, that's been a job share for, I can't remember how long, 15 years, 20 years.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
I appreciate this list because it's a good reminder for us, the appropriate, inappropriate use of professional time.
Right.
I, I mean, it's a, it's a good reminder of how, I think Jeff said it earlier, if, or maybe Brendan said it, related to the configuration of licensed staffers versus non licensed staff and how that can be supportive to help the professionals do their work and so forth. So I think both of you raised it directly and indirectly. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think the American School Counselor Association should adopt, adopt your language, right? Adding the inappropriate use of professional time rather than inappropriate activities.
Yeah, I know.
It's a useful website.
So the next one on the list is response.
Yeah. Equity placeholder. And that is a, you know, the need serve is a direct response to the board's charge to do this equity audit. Impact of not including, it just kicks the can down the road. Whatever comes out of that, the recommendations that come out of that, we just get kicked down the road a year. And the effectiveness metric, I think student surveys, including the engaged surveys that we're doing, and we're doing those starting at grade three, starting at grade three this year. And there might be others that would be recommended by the audit. Any questions about that? Yeah, Jeff?
Working on a parent survey as well that is hopefully going to incorporate some questions specific to equity.
Right.
And Jeff, is that just for, for all of us?
For the district, there's actually a design team and that's one of the things they're working on this year. The same team who created the engagement survey last year, or expanded the survey, I should say.
Yes.
Just, just as a refresher, since this is intentionally put in here as a placeholder, as a board, as we get the audit back, we're going to kind of have a discussion of what that audit looks like before we spend any of that money.
Right, and a recommendation.
Yep, absolutely.
Like how to spend the money.
Okay, great.
Yes, and you would need to approve that. And the last one is the bus dispatch.
The last one you haven't seen yet because it's part of tonight's presentation, but I'll just, well, I'll just tell you what it is. Ken Martin, our longtime bus manager, manages 54 staff directly. He's also responsible for managing trips, all the trips that, besides just transporting kids back and forth. We also gave him responsibility for working with special ed, for all the special ed transportation. Ken, I can tell you now, because he's announced it, has decided to retire at the end of the year. And I.
School year or addition?
School year.
School year.
Yeah. I didn't let him go before. But even before that, we were talking about, we've been talking about restructuring his position. It's just, our system is just too big for one person to, to manage alone. In addition to the fact that in order to be there from morning until the last bus gets home, he works 5:00 AM to 9:00. Then he takes a three hour break and then he comes back and works noon to four, which I bless him for doing it. I would never want that work, that work schedule, but it doesn't work for him. But what it, who it doesn't work for is the building principals. Right about the time when they need to talk to him, he's not in the office. And it's not fair to expect him to be, you know, doing that work in the middle of the day. So I, so I, so what I would like to do with this position is have coverage for the whole day. I also, I think it would provide better supervision for the bus drivers, better training. We're having a lot of issues with, just like they are having them in the school building, having discipline issues on the bus or behavior issues on the bus. Cassandra did an awesome job doing some training, but I think it was, Ken's finding more and more of his time being caught up with liaison, those issues. So that's all better. And finally, this one, I, I really am hopeful that with a, a little more, with a little more attention to all the paperwork, which dispatch will do for us, I can bring some of the costs down. I discussed, got to be some slop in the system. Like one thing is that if, if a game gets canceled and, or something happens and a, and a trip gets canceled, by, in the contract, we have to let the bus driver know 36 hours in advance or we have to pay them anyway. I have a feeling that, from what I've heard, that there may be some trips that the bus driver's not getting the word. And so we're paying any, him to not drive or her to not drive. So I think there's a little bit there. I'm really hopeful that we're going to find that having an extra set of eyes on that will eventually, at least partially pay for itself. But it really comes down to the fact that having one bus supervisor for 54 bus drivers is not effective in my mind. That's what that position is. And I put down there just the, one more, I, it's easy for me to quantify because the fewer calls I get from administrators and parents, the better. You shouldn't, if you have an issue with your transportation, you should not find that when you call the bus, the bus barn, there's no room to leave a message because he's already gotten 17 calls that morning because of something. So it really just need, we're just not doing the job communication. We need to fix that. That's what that means. Yes.
Do we use all of our own buses for field trips as long as it isn't, you know, super far and you need something more than a school bus? But kids are going to the Flynn, it's all done in-house.
We always try to. The problem is the timing because those buses also have to do the, you know, if it's a, an after school trip and they're not getting back till late, then we might not have, yeah, almost all. Just something you're concerned about or?
No, I just, does, I, I wonder, assume that creates some efficiency.
Actually, it's great if someone takes a trip in the middle because what's inefficient is that I have to hire bus drivers who work two hours in the morning and then two hours in the afternoon.
Right.
They would love to have work in the middle of the day. So field trips are what saves us as far as being able to hire bus drivers. So that works fine, but there has to be times just right. So I want to come back to transportation. It's a little bit further in, but at this point, are we okay to move on to district operations?
Yes.
Great. Because my food service directors are all sitting back there going, I have to get up and start making breakfast in three hours, Dean. Move it along. So district operation. So just, yeah, so I, we spent last week, spent three hours with the finance committee going through all of this in a little more detail. I sent you guys this package over the weekend, which is more detail than I'm going to show you here. I'm trying to kind of streamline this presentation. You know, I would like to usually show you guys lots of numbers, but so many eyes are glazing over as I will go with this. But I'm really open to feedback. If this is too far, not enough information, I'm happy to, we can work through how to go back to that. But the, so you're only going to see like two slides on each of my areas on the next page. Just as a reminder, this is operations. It's a 4% increase overall. We're going to start with food service, but there's also O and M technology and transportation going over tonight. So we're going to start with food service. What is that picture, Bonnie? It's really yummy.
Scott can answer. It's.
Yeah, what is this? What is this, Scott? Butternut squash soup? All right. So that's Scott Wagner. He's the Food Service Director in Williston. And Deb Vissonette from Heinsburg, Becky, Mayshak, I lose this, Mayshak or Mayshak. And from Shelburne, and Leo La Force, CBU, who feeds you all the time. I told you, Leo, they said if you'd had the orange chicken, this would go way better today. Elizabeth Skypek is our, is our Charlotte Food Service Director and she couldn't be here tonight. But we don't usually talk about food service because in the general fund budget is only the subsidy. But that number keeps getting bigger and it's been kind of a constant struggle for me and my food service directors to try to wrap our arms around what the heck's going on and how can we fix it. Just a few numbers to get you started. We served about 20,000 breakfasts last year, about 90,000 lunches last year. Average participation rate's around 45%. So we spend $2.3 million and we have about 200, I mean, $2 million in revenue. So that's about a $300,000 loss. Of that, a little under a million is in food. We have 38 staff, five, five directors and 33 food service workers. We worked this team back here, worked really hard last year as we tried to consolidate as a single food service operations team. And we developed with the help of our consultant, developed our mission statement, which you can read for yourself. But it's really about, it's not just about putting calories in front of kids, but trying to teach kids healthy, through action, teach them healthy nutrition too. So here's some numbers. I had to put one chart with numbers in here, guys. So here's some numbers. And FY18, FY19, FY20, which is what we're in, FY21, which is what we're projecting. So just, so the key that I want you to focus on is, so of the 2.36 that we spend, a little under 900 K is food. So that's about, let me say, 38%. And the rest is staff costs. The operations, 57 K is just if we need new equipment or something breaks, we have to fix it. But so we get reimbursed $3.48 for every hot meal that we serve. So the food cost is 38%. That means that we, of, of the money, we've spent $1.32 on food. So these guys back here have to feed more than 1,500 kids at $1.32, something that they want to eat. they want to eat. And we have a community with really high standards. In fact, part of our struggle is to tamp down expectations, frankly, because we can't keep, the $3.48 is what we get from the federal government, we charge 3.50, guys? 3.50. We're afraid of raising that number too much, because there are families who can't afford the 3.50, right? So, you know, we're a little concerned about that. So it's a balancing act, we want to serve really good food, we want to make it interesting, want the kids to try new things, and yet we have $1.30 to play with, play with on That's the struggle. The, the funding struggle here is that, in these staff costs going up here, you see it's going up, you know, 100,000 a year, about 50 of that every year is healthcare. It's the same healthcare we're dealing with everywhere else, right? But it's going up, it's going up more rapidly than I'm, than we want to raise the price of a meal. And when you raise the cost of, of your staff costs, and you don't want to raise the, you know, change the price of your meal, you have to take it out of the food. And that's where we're really feeling the squeeze. So, do we have a deal for you? One thing I've really struggled with is that, how do you know when you spent too much? Right? I mean, talking about food for our kids, how do you know you spent too much? How much do we keep putting in the general fund? Should I, should I get that number back down to 100? You know, what's, what's there to do? So Leo or Scott came up with this thought when we were talking about, how do these food service companies do it? Right? Is that, most of the food service companies that are closer to break even don't pay benefits to their employees. So what my team is saying is that they think that they can do better, and you would want them to do better, to control it locally, but they're handicapped by the benefits. So what our proposal is, is that instead of subsidizing the loss every year, we're becoming, trying to forecast how much, we're not going to be able to make up in food costs, but we're, we as a team are saying, if the board would fund the benefits for these food service employees, they'll break even on everything else. To me, I love that, it's very accountable, right? It says, Leo, you gotta figure it out. We're going to take that handicap away from you. Our employees, I thoroughly believe our employees still need those benefits. Not arguing that at all, it's the right thing to do. But to pass that, to put that into the food service one gives them a handicap that they can't make. So that's what the team's committed to doing, is figuring out as a group how to, how to be successful, which in our case is breaking even, if the board would support handling the healthcare, or health, health dental life benefits. Yep, Colleen?
Clever idea. I just have a couple of questions, so helping me understand, when you said about 50 is an increase, $50, 50%?
$50,000.
$50,000 of that is related to insurance increases?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, coming, having been a board member in Heinsburg, and Deb doing an amazing job feeding our kids in Heinsburg, I, this has been a long struggle, and we know that our food service costs money, and is part of our budget, and we've committed to that over time. And so I think it's a, it's an interesting idea to give it a different approach, and I'm, I'll be interested in how other board members are thinking about it, or respond to it, but I, food service is a different creature within a school. It's different from instructional program in the sense that you have, we need to feed kids, we need to feed people, and what the federal government will reimburse compared to what's available to try to feed our kids so that they can sit down and actually learn, because they've got food in their stomachs. It's just, it's a complex program, so I appreciate the thinking that your team is doing.
For me, I like this, and we talked about this a lot in the finance committee meeting, because it really holds all food services director to an attainable goal. You know, offering insurances was never a discussion, we need to do that, but if you look at most restaurants or other food service companies that, like the Abbey came in, they're like, oh yeah, we'll break even, but we're not going to give any of our employees benefits. So I think it's a very reasonable request for them to say, hey, you know, we're going to break even at the end of the day, just remove those benefits from, from what you're measuring me against.
Thanks for hearing it out, I think it's clever, I think it's workable, appreciate it, it is in the numbers, it's a big increase.
So you've incorporated that in this proposed budget?
Yes.
Just one concern, is setting a precedent for other staff positions? And I, and I'm just-
I'm sorry, I'm looking, I- Because everybody else is in our budget, everyone else is in the general fund, with the exception of grants, but-
Okay, so how, so this would be, okay, I-
Yeah, this is taking the place of-
This is one of the only entities there.
Oh, this is like totally removing it from the food service, and putting that part of it into general fund. Got it, got it, got it.
So when we have the, and it'll be actuals, right, so we'll just, as the benefits come, those will go into the general fund, it won't be any, anything else.
Are there other elements of food service program that you can move into the general fund budget?
Can move it all in the general fund if you want, that's, you know, several people are trying to get that, but, you know, there is a question about why it's the one thing that we don't pay for in the general fund, but that's a whole different issue, I was just hoping to get the healthcare.
It's philosophical, we've had long discussions about this, right?
Well, the subsidy is in the general fund.
Yes.
Yes.
Right. But there is, if you talk to Hunger Free Vermont and several other places, they would like it all to be in the general fund, or at least all funded, so all kids eat. I mean, right now, I won't go too far to birdwalk, these guys will lead me, but it's just like, if you make $33,000, $32,000 as a single mom with a child, you do not qualify for free and reduced. That's ridiculous, I mean, that's ridiculous. So, so we do have hungry kids, and we're trying really hard to feed them all.
Right, okay.
So, right now, food service is a enterprise fund.
Enterprise fund, yeah.
And is that our choice, or is that the way the chart of accounts works? And it has to be an enterprise fund?
I think it has to be an enterprise fund, because it's actually managed under the USDA.
Right, so that's why you can't just put, you could, you could subsidize all of it.
You could give it 100% subsidy.
Right, but you can't just put it in the general budget, and then it just like, kind of disappears with everything else.
But to be clear, we're doing away, we're replacing the subsidy in the budget with the benefits?
Correct.
In the budget?
Correct.
I'm thinking of things like, do we pay for laundry, or, you know, uniforms, or anything like that?
Yeah, actually, there's quite a bit, Colleen, and actually, I've actually kind of moved the other direction on that, because I'm really curious to know what it costs to do our food service, so, so even things like maintaining, like we've had this discussion with the facilities guys, like the facilities folks maintain the facility, but if your oven breaks, it has, it should go in here, because we really should know what it costs to run our-
That's a good point, when you're comparing to privatization.
Right, right, so we're pretty, we're getting better at that, there's, we're not 100% there, but we're close.
Is the, is it anticipated that this move would actually free up more than $1.30 or whatever in the budget for the food?
No, because actually, this here, this here, this number here is actually my projected loss. It was, it was like, oh, I don't know, 3.15, it was like within a couple of thousand dollars of, what I was projecting to lose was really close to the actual benefits, so, so no, it's, it's what, if we don't change the model, it's the same numbers. But, but, but if the numbers keep getting worse, I won't have to keep eating into the food bill. No pun intended.
So what is, what is the, okay, I'm, then maybe, what is the anticipated benefit? Specifically, yeah?
Yeah.
If it's not to buy better food, or, or improve the surroundings, or?
Well, because you could tell me that's too much money, get back to 200, which is what our budgeted, if you, if you look on that function chart, right now, we've only budgeted a $200,000 loss for the current year, and I'm bringing it up to 3.39, which is a huge jump, and I didn't think I could ask that without giving you a model that makes you feel like I'm accepting some accountability. Otherwise, you could say, get back to 200, and I'd take it out of you.
As a board? For ye, since I've been on the board, we've struggled with what is the right amount of money to invest into food services? And the, the answers ranged by board member. So what this does, it gives Jean and the food service directors a goal at the end of the year, that with the exception of benefits, you're going to break even. So I was just telling Jeff, so just to make numbers simple, if, it costs us $100 a year to provide food for all of our kids, and right now, the food service budgets are, are spending $125, and they're saying they can break even, or excuse me, if the food service, with, with benefits of the food services, we're costing $125, they're never going to be able to achieve the goal of doing food for the entire district for $125, because of the rising cost of benefits. So in order for us to come up with a fair goal, they proposed that we will break even if you remove our benefits from the target. So really, all we're doing is taking those benefits out of their target and housing it someplace else that administration will determine what is best. So we're not raising the cost, and we're not lowering the cost, we're holding the team accountable for future price increases, for decreases, or any changes, so now we have a way to measure our food services year after year, whereas before we didn't.
So interestingly though, couldn't that make their job harder in some way? Because they, I don't know, they, have they, I hate to say use they, but have food services, could have sort of hidden, if you can just keep pointing to the increase in healthcare as the reason for the cost that keeps, that keeps climbing, then, so I get the accountability piece, and I really like that, but I think, I'm trying, I guess, I'm trying to understand how we can provide the accountability, sure, move it to the general fund, that seems like a good idea to me, but then how do you also address improving food services?
Okay, we are addressing improving food services. I think that we've made big strides this year, it's a transition year. We went to a common menu for the K8s, and we're, to each, each cycle, five-week cycle, we've been, the team gets together and they say, well, this one either didn't sell, or it was okay, but it's probably nutritionally weak, so we'll try something else, and they put it in there, and then we can check the metrics to see if it's getting better, you know, anything you feed your kids, you know, you offer it once, you offer it five weeks later, it's kind of hard to say, did they, just haven't had it enough to like it or not, it's not immediate, like it might be with adults, but we're working on that. So we, so we're working on it, but while I appreciate that, I mean, we'd all like to be able to spend more on food for kids, I think the model that's out there, at least the one that we're willing to give a shot at, is to break even and do a better job with that, that level of resource. If it just doesn't work, or we come up with some real reason why we need to change, for instance, there, there are a lot of parents out there who would prefer that we don't sell snacks, but that's a huge revenue generator, right? So I've even told parents that, it's like, if you would like to come to the board and ask them to increase the subsidy by the, by the revenue I get from those snacks, and the board agrees, then I can take them out of the cafeteria, but until that happens, I can't do it. So those are the kind of things that I could come and ask you for, if that's, if that was a thing, but right now, we think we have a model that's healthy for kids, meets all the guidelines, nutritional guidelines, and federal guidelines, treats our staff fairly, and we can break even. Does that answer your question? If you'd like to give us another $100,000, we'd love to take it back.
Yeah, I think that's where my mind is going, like, well, let's do more.
Let's do more, yeah, yeah.
And, and for the record, I, I do think that food services, food service is fantastic. Didn't mean to imply otherwise, I think they're doing a really terrific job.
There you go.
Certainly with the resources they have, especially.
Yeah. And a few more areas, but, oh, go, I'm sorry, go ahead. Erin, you need to have your-
This is a, a bit of a divergence, but I also think, like, these are the kinds of things, I wonder how flexibly that set aside for equity or other equity considerations in the future might be, in that it isn't that we need a position in a certain place, but maybe we need to subsidize lunches up to a higher income threshold, we need to have more kids who we can feed, those may be, again, that will not be, that will be up to the administration to decide, and work with the equity audit, but I think as we continue to think about priorities as a board, like, to me, I see things like this as other places where, like, yeah, maybe we do need to spend some more money also for some equity and, you know, some poverty reasons.
Yeah, so you do know, I'm sure you know, we never turn a kid away hungry, they don't get a shame lunch. Scott, do you want to talk, say something to that, I mean, or anybody say what you do with, how we handle kids who?
Well, I mean, for the last couple of years, I've got a policy that we don't refuse a kid, he comes up with a lunch, we don't take it away from him, we don't say, no, you don't have any money on your account, you get a peanut butter sandwich instead. So, and most of us have had that as our policy, even before we made it official policy at this school, because it does put kids in a really awkward position.
That's, yeah.
And we're not there to be police, we're there to serve kids, and to take care of them when they're hungry, so.
Yeah, so we don't, they don't buy snacks, but that's something that I think our cashiers are pretty good about, you know, finessing that, so they're not embarrassed, but we absolutely feed the kids, anybody who needs to lose a kid.
Just quickly, insurance is a cost of doing business, so if we were trying to compare us running a food service program versus hiring a food service entity, privatizing, they would have insurance costs included within their cost to us. So I would-
Just real quick, I would tell you that Cisco, or one of the, they don't give benefits to their employees.
I don't-
They do not have an insurance cost, because they don't give it to their employees.
You're talking health insurance?
Yes, liability insurance, of course, but insurance for their employees, not so much.
I don't have any numbers or facts in front of me, so I can't argue that point, but my point is that it's a cost of doing business, and if it means that we need to continue to subsidize, which I think we still need to do anyway, when we're looking at metrics at how well, you know, how do you know when you're spending too much, or whatever, to me, is just back out those costs that they have no control over, when you're looking, when you're trying to evaluate whether or not it's meeting on target, but-
That's a combination.
But it's, but keep it within the whole food service package.
Yeah, I'm confident that Jean is going to, you know, work with her team to accurately account where we're going to place these, where we'll place the insurance.
It's just taking money out of your left pocket and putting it in your right, I mean, to me, it makes no sense.
Our auditors had an issue with us.
Look, so let me just, if I did that, Colleen, it would end up being your subsidy anyway, right?
Exactly.
But, but the fact is-
We're going to pay for it anyway.
But, but I can't afford to, I mean, from my other hat, my general fund management hat, I can't afford to not have a budget for that subsidy in the general fund.
Right.
We'd blow the general fund budget, so I just need something, and that-
Yeah, why not just, yeah, I mean, I don't-
So I think we're saying the same thing.
You know, yeah, keep it, but because it's food service, understanding how that, the costs of a food service program-
Yes, yes.
I think it's part of us, understanding that the cultural milieu of a school is that we fund food for kids.
Yeah, we're definitely not stopping funding anything for the kids, and it's a priority to make sure that they're fed well. What this is, is, and Angela said it really well, I never thought about this way, well, it's making it harder, because now they can't hide behind the benefits, but-
You can pull that out.
The fact is, is that this is the first year that we're going to give them a target, and we're going to reevaluate it over time, and if it's not something that's achievable, we're not going to say, okay, we're going to cut out, you know, X amount of money for food services. I don't think we're at that point as a board. But I do like the fact that we're going to have a target for a department that is $2 million, $2.5 million, which is a large, large portion of our budget, at least in my mind.
I think we're saying the same thing, Colleen, I'll be happy to kind of talk to you, make sure that I, that we're doing it right, but in either case, this is the number I need in the general fund, which was the point.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'm going to let these folks go home, because they have a long way to drive home on this bad night, and then they got to be back to serve breakfast in the morning, so thank you very much, thank you guys for all you do.
Just out of curiosity, what time do you guys go to work?
Six.
Six, pretty early.
When I call, when I, when I call the, the cancel school, Scott- When I call the cancel school, Scott's already at work, from Barry. So, yeah, all right, thank you guys.
From Barry.
Yeah. So I am going to take a little break and turn this over to Mike for technology, which is a good news story, which is the only reason he would let me turn it over to him.
Hello, everyone, thank you. So I'm going to talk about technology, just a quick reminder. Just a quick reminder, I work with Bonnie really closely on the whole technology picture. I kind of manage the whole wires and equipment side of it, the infrastructure, the platform. Bonnie takes, you know, works with the D L L, the district...
Digital learning.
Digital learning leaders, that's it. And helps bring technology into the classroom, helps teachers and kids manage the classroom. So we're going to talk about here, kind of the platforms, this is the platform. So the budget, like, one point nine, almost, three point three percent increase. Jean can correct me, but I think that's mostly salaries and benefits. We have nine really, really good people who work in the schools every day, keeping Chromebooks working and desktops working, and helping teachers and students solve their problems. I mean, I have to say it again, we have nine really good people in the schools who make all this work and keep things going. Just a couple of highlights. One thing has happened twice within the past nine months or so. Our internet provider had issues, and internet was cut off to all the schools. So right now, our internet comes up from Albany, New York, goes into central office, then it comes out to all the schools. Around the Albany area, there was an issue, and the first time it was out for about ten hours, the next time it was out for about eighteen hours. And off and on in the wintertime, isolated schools, power line will go down, and internet will be interrupted with the school, because all of our internet comes from the central office to all the schools. And Jean and I have talked about this a lot, and I know, I think, at the last board meeting, she talked about the redundant internet connectivity. One thing we're doing this year is getting redundant internet to all the schools for what I call administrative purposes. So each school will have a one-gig line that will allow administration and teachers to at least access their email. They can check, you know, Blackboard Connect, our Connect Five thing, or go on the web interface to send out messages. They can get communication from parents. Because when our internet is down, school is still in, is still happening, and parents don't have a way to communicate with us. And they don't often know our internet's down. You know, it's not anything that you would expect. So our redundant internet connection is going to allow us to sort of continue to communicate, continue to do administrative things that we can't do when the internet goes down. Some kind of a side benefit of this is, for each school, we're going to route out our public traffic, our public Wi-Fi traffic, both C V S D guest during the day and C V S D public, kind of in the afternoon, evening. They're all going to go out through the one-gig line. And that will have two benefits, that will help isolate non-secure traffic from public traffic. I mean, we isolate it now, but it's better to send it out a totally different way. And it helps us conserve bandwidth. So now our entire secure internet connection, when this is in place, will be solely for the educational work done in the schools. We're not going to share it with people who bring in phones and bring in laptops and bring in four or five devices, which we're finding more and more, people have two, three, and four devices they bring into school, kind of eating bandwidth. So the redundant internet connection helps when internet goes down, but it's going to help every day, kids help us conserve bandwidth and get better experiences in the classroom.
Mike, this is a totally naive question, but when the internet did go down, we could still communicate with parents via cell phones, right?
So that's kind of a problem, you know, cell phones, it depends on what school you're in and where in the school you are. Some, like, Wilson Central and Shelburne, if you're kind of in the administrative offices, you have zero cell service. So you're kind of walking out to the main lobby area. Or in some schools, you're walking outside to get cell service. With our redundant internet connection, most cell phones, you can make cell calls wireless, over the wireless network. So that will help strengthen the cell service in the schools with the redundant connection. So the redundant connection is going to cost about fourteen-four a year. That's going to come out of our budget, that's no new money. The hardware we bought this year was about eight, nine thousand dollars, firewalls for the redundant connections. And that's coming out of the whole tariff thing. Remember last year, we talked about kind of changing how we're going to do purchases and delaying some purchases in case tariffs happened, and really raised the cost of Chromebooks? Well, tariffs didn't happen. So part of what we're going to do with the money is, part of what we've done with the money is buy the firewalls for the redundant connection. And the rest of what we set aside for tariff money, we're going to go ahead and buy servers and switches and stuff because we don't know what next year is going to be. Maybe we have tariffs, maybe we don't, maybe prices go, get really expensive on equipment. We don't know that. So that's sort of how we're managing our, you know, managing our budget. Our focus continues to be Chromebooks for kids in the classroom, Chromebooks for teachers, and then laptops and desktops for administrative support staff and so forth. And, you know, program works well. Now, if you give me two minutes, whenever I talk to a group, I have to talk about cybersecurity. I can't not do that. So I just, so the reason I do it all the time is, the number one, the most effective way to help stop cyber events is to continually talk to people and educate people, make sure it's in everybody's mind. That's part of why I do it all the time. So just to remind you what we do within the school district, you know, we use two-factor authentication. So you log into your email, username and password, you got to have your phone to get a text message or authenticator app or a telephone call. However, whatever the second factor is, you need it to log in. Someone in Russia can have your username and password, so what, really, so what? If they don't have your phone, they don't have your authenticator app, they can't get in to your account. So we do it for all adult email. All of our servers require two-factor authentication. The most important server that does is the one that houses our student information system. Anybody who uses our student information system, logs into that server, they have to use two-factor authentication. So nobody can get into our student database unless they have a two-factor account. And then more and more of our online resources allow us to sign in with our Google account. So they don't necessarily support two-factor by themselves, but if we can log in with our Google account, that gives us two-factor authentication. So for example, when teachers log into Jump Rope for grading, they click on the sign in with Google link, and they're going to get a little thing on their phone, here's the second factor you need to log into Jump Rope. That's kind of the way we are dealing with online resources that don't support two-factor yet. And that's just really strengthening how we protect our information. We've adopted the principle of least privilege. So that means when you log into a computer, you get the, only the rights you need to do whatever you need to do on the computer. So for example, if you're logging into a computer and use Word, you can't install printers, you can't install software, you can't do anything but run Word. By minimizing people's rights, that kind of minimizes the exposure and the risk to the computer. All of the network people have two accounts, we all have two accounts. One is our general plain vanilla user account that we use most of the time when we log into our desktops and we check email and all that. We only use our administrator account when we log into a server. If we log into a desktop computer, we never log in with our administrator account. Again, we're trying to minimize the risk of what rights would be available should a machine become compromised. So the other thing we do, and this, I spent a whole bunch of time with Bonnie about this, is the whole privacy policy thing.
So, we're going to tag-team this one. So Mike and I have been working for two years, since I believe there was a parent that came to the board, to put into practice a process. And we've really made some great progress in that anytime a teacher wants to explore using any new tool, they, I feel like all of our teachers now know, there's a process. Here it is, here's what I need to follow. It's not just random, I heard about this great thing at a conference and I'm going to sign up. They pause and think first, and that, to me, shows we've made progress. So we are working with the Vermont Student Data Privacy Alliance and doing our best, whenever we get a request for technology from any teachers or administrators, to explore, has that vendor signed the privacy agreement? Or we send them one to sign before we move forward and start using it? So we're really making progress in that way, doing our best to educate people. So Mike and I have taken our show on the road and did a presentation at the recent Vermont Fest conference, where, you know, if you look at the Student Data Privacy Alliance website, you'll see a whole list of school districts in Vermont that have signed up for it, and about two or three that are actively using it. So we're feeling like, because we're one of those actively using school districts, that we need to help bring others on board, because the more people using it, the more power we have with the vendors to help them sign our agreement. But we are sending information to faculty and staff to continuously remind them about this. And there was an article in the Williston Observer last year, and a blog post that we, our district, put out. So we feel like we're making some good progress along these lines.
Is that new meta-metrics thing, I don't even know if our district is going to participate, would that be something that would be subject to...
I asked that question today.
Are they part of it?
We don't know yet. The whole state's promoting that we use that, but I asked, have they signed a privacy agreement? And I don't know the answer yet.
So that's pretty best of all technology story. Anybody have questions?
Yes, reminder, so the kids, while accessing their cell phones, they don't connect to our network. They have an outside network that they connect to, so that they don't...
Yeah, so any non-school device connects to either C V S D guest, which is adults, or C V S D public, which is, that's turned on like from three o'clock till ten o'clock at night. That's not on during the daytime. I mean, generally, kids aren't allowed, at least K eight kids, aren't allowed to use their cell phones. So they don't connect to anything. If kids, even in high school, if kids bring in their personal device, they don't connect to our secure network. They connect to, they would connect to a student network here, or C V S D guest or public at the other schools.
I know in the past, there have been discussions around two-factor authentication for the kids. Does that have possibility, is it something that we're looking into?
Yeah, we've talked about that, we've talked about that especially for the high school kids. And I mean, that's kind of an ongoing conversation we have with the digital learning leader here at C B U, and Bonnie and myself, we talk about it. I mean, I think eventually, we will do two-factor authentication for high school kids. I don't know what the timing would be, but I think it's important. As soon as they go to college, more and more colleges require college kids to use two-factor authentication anyway. So why not start in high school?
I'm just thinking about classroom uses of cell phones. And I imagine that your team is thinking about how, how the district might move forward so that eventually, and I don't even know if it's being done now, let's say a teacher puts out a survey and has kids type in something, you know, a phone number or something, that they can collect survey data. But using the devices that kids already own, in cell phones, as a learning tool, are we addressing how that can be done? Is it done now? I don't know.
It's done at the high school, our K eights, the students are not using cell phones during the day. All, as of this year, all of our K eight buildings, the students put them in their backpack when they arrive at school, and they're in those backpacks until they leave. It's different, it's changed. And I totally see your point about using the device they're most comfortable using as a learning tool. However, there's a big however, in terms of distraction in the classroom.
And I'll tell you, as a parent, just saying, do not make no foolers do two-factor because my child is not getting a cellphone. It's just, it is a huge distraction. I prefer, it's like a uniform, go into the classroom, here's your Chromebook. Every kid has the exact same setup. Even that they use Google Classrooms in the classrooms, I find that as a problem because Google's linked to YouTube, and YouTube has some great learning stuff. But I'd say a good seventy-five percent of the time, my child sits down, does three seconds what they need to do, toggles over into who knows where. I'm getting emails to check things out that are completely inappropriate to what's going on in class.
I guess maybe my bigger question is related to, and I don't need any answers, related to bring your own device protocol within the school and how the district will move forward with that, whatever grade level, I don't...
Maybe that would be a good topic, I'm just...
I don't need to figure it out.
And to maybe bring it back to the budget implications on budget. But I actually did just make a note, because we've talked a lot, actually, about food service, like, not the budget issues related, but more overall, and how do we, how are we going to balance, how to balance that? And I made a note about technology as well.
Everybody likes operations.
Everybody likes operations.
Thanks, Mike. Mike's doing an awesome job as a state leader in privacy, so we've been to a couple of conferences, and everyone says, Mike can for C V S D, this is what you want to do. So that is really lucky to have him. Okay, really quick on transportation. It's really salary and benefits driving the increase. Actually, we've started under Bob's protocol. We look at U.S. Energy Information Administration to see what kind of energy increases we should assume, and they're saying, good news, zero on diesel. So there's no increase on fuel in this budget. It does have the new position for the dispatcher. The, not getting too far into it, the, there are several different kinds of, and if you look at this, this thing here, you saw it. Transportation here is not just getting kids to and from school, but it is field trips, and it's co-curriculars and athletics, and it's special ed. So there's all sorts of different flavors, and they're all in this number or reimbursed out of a bigger number. It's all in here, and there is an increase in budgeted field trips. Like, you guys are tired of hearing, this is another place where getting your hands around the entire budget is really hard, because sometimes the principals would just, if they had money at the end of the year, they would allow it to be used on the general fund versus an S A T account, versus asking parents. It's a little bit of a, it's hard to get around a number, our arms around a number. But we are sort of having a consistent budgeted number for these, either athletics, or mostly athletics, or some field trips, that we're moving the budget to recognize. So that's part of the increase. Good news, only asking for two buses this year. We try to keep it at an average of eight years' age in the bus, and I only need two to keep it at that number. So that's down from six in the last few years. Remember, we had to build the fleet for Charlotte, so we needed to have an extra couple. We were all set there, so we're in good shape on buses.
Is the transportation budget the only place that budgeted field trips would show up?
It would, the only place you would see it, because, well, if it's a budgeted field trip, it would definitely show up here. There are S A T accounts, so some schools or classrooms, maybe you guys can help me, but they'll, they'll ask parents to send in money for it. I know with some of the athletic teams at C B U, the parents will chip in for transportation. So there is a lot, like I said, there's a lot of different sources of money.
Yeah.
What is S A T?
Student activity accounts. Student activity accounts, which should be...
Okay, so, but this is, as far as, but this is the only place where budgeted field trips show up on this big old budget?
It's the only place you see it on this big old budget. So the, you'll hear me sometimes talk about this, the principals have a local, non-personnel budget. And that's all the spending at the schools that's not a person. So Elaine holds, her principals responsible for the budgeted positions and the non-personnel budget. So Adam has like a million dollars of non-personnel costs that he's responsible to hit. And in there, you will see these numbers, if you were to look at his non-local thing. We don't ever look at it in that view, but that's where that is. So he's responsible to make sure that his field trips fit within that number. And that budget is, at the K eight level, is equalized by student.
And I just, and maybe you said this, and I'm sorry if I missed it. You made an email a couple of months ago about the grant for the electric...
You made an email a couple of months ago about the grant for the electric buses. You know what, Kelly? That's a great question. If the state had officially announced who won those buses, I would be able to tell you that if we were lucky winners of those two, we're responsible for two diesel buses, the cost of two diesel buses towards that grant. But unfortunately, since that state hasn't announced that yet, I can't really talk about it anymore. But, if you, if it does happen soon, I'm happy to talk about it all day and night, and I think there's some people on the board who would like to talk about it a little more.
Okay.
Okay?
Surprise!
Nope, sir, come.
Okay, operations and maintenance, again, no, you're changing, change in staffing. Our, there's some notes on here just about how we are equitable across our buildings for support. Again, we try, we, we assign the custodial staff by using an industry standard that we use across, so we're kind of moving towards that. Pretty, pretty close to equity on that. Most of the other spending, that's discretionary, not really discretionary to maintain your buildings, but, you know, fixing things, we, again, we have a ratio that's the same per square foot across all the buildings. We don't do that on utilities. Utilities are utilities. If you're in Charlotte, and it's oil, and you're in CBU, and it's wood chips, there's no way I can do that on a kind of ratio. That's the spending we have. So, but that's pretty much all the interesting facts on operations and maintenance. Let me get to the really good stuff. This is the list of projects which we have prioritized into the construction account. This is not a general fund account. This is the construction account. This money is some, you know, there's been a construction account for a while. This is where we put the million dollars that the, you guys have the voter, you know, supported asking voters to put in. Last year, plus there's $110,000 in the budget that we slide over to the construction account every year. So, this is the list of projects that the facilities team has chosen. I'm not really sure why this sidewalk's got double asterisks on it. I'll have to figure that one out, but I should take those off. But, otherwise, you can see...
Is it for the second try?
I think it's, I did ask specifically if it was more. It was more. So, maybe that's what it was. It's like, this is not the same money that you gave me last time that was done twice. But, yeah, this is a new set. Some security, some safety, some just improvements. Got to put something back for the quonset debt. Oh, I forgot.
Jean, I think you said this right. Is that the quonset debt? Yep. How is this list, this is by, like, with the input from building administrators, or how is this list...
Yes. That's a good question. So, my facilities directors sit with the administrators and go through, you know, the facilities directors will put down a list, then they'll sit with the administrators and say, is there something on here that you need that's not on here? Or is there some things on here that you feel is a higher priority? So, they put it together, they bring those notes, and then Kurt sits down with all of his guys to go through that list, and then we try to figure out how to fund it all.
And I think I know the answer to this, but I just need clarification, because I don't see Charlotte Cafeteria repairs. That's...
Next page. It's the next page. This is the, this is our proposal for the capital bond that we would like to ask you guys to bring forward. It's $6 million. You can't quite see it here. And what you see right here is the four and a half million dollars is the Charlotte, the first phase of the Charlotte project. This is what we're going to bring the architects in to talk with you all about. The general feeling right now, the, the plan, the four and a half million dollars is to take care of the envelope of the building, so seal it up so we stop losing heat, better windows. Jen, Stephanie, Wendy?
Door sort of jangling. And as we talked about, like, the deferred maintenance, part of what we've done with the engineers is really walk around the building and say, what urgently needs to be repaired first? And what we concluded after our big meeting was, we've got to address the envelope and the air circulation, and then from there, that starts to affect the internal systems. We are not a sprinkler school, so we need fire sprinklers. Our electric will need some work. So, that's why we're describing it as phases, because what we need now is like the emergency repairs, just to keep things together in the building.
So, you'll get more of that, more of that. Today's point, this is sort of a lot, fast, in parallel thing going on. CBU has got some issues here. We have $400,000 in there for fields. This is not a turf field. This is, the track is in need of repair. It's getting to the point where we probably couldn't hold meets there if we don't get it fixed. So, the track needs repair. The, the long story on the drainage, you know, on the, on the fields here, we did, after the second failed bond for the turf, we explored another solution which had to do with adding more drainage, subsurface but not super deep, like two feet deep kind of surface drainage. And we did it up on, for those of you familiar, I think it's D Field, right? It's the one up near the road. It's not turf. It works okay. I mean, it works better than not doing anything. So, this, so we said, well, that's, that's a pretty good solution. So, we've had, we've had in the five-year plan for a while now to do four fields. It costs about $100,000 a field. So, we have two more fields here. So, that's the track, and then two fields.
It's not actually four fields. Is this what you're asking me to add?
Yes, that's it. It's a five-year thing, so it's got two fields and two, but this is only two fields.
Okay, two fields. Got it.
We have about $100,000 in here for stormwater management. There's some regulations coming down from the state that we don't have, entirely have our arms around yet. We will in the next couple of weeks though, because we have an engineer coming in. We have about $30,000 that we have told the Ahead of the Storm Group, which was Lewis Creek Association. We've been working with them for about five years now on, on different projects around the schools at this end of the county, so not Williston, but the rest of them who drain into there. And they've got a long list of projects that they've already had engineered and are working on getting grants, and this is our, the $30,000 was a match. So, we have, this is the placeholder, I'm going to, before you see this file number next month, I'll have a sharper pencil on that, but I know at least 30 of it is sort of our, our verbal commitment that if we can, we will match up to $30,000 a year. So, then we have, you know, Heinsberg has got, we got told by our insurance company that we need to redo the paving and the sidewalks there before we have an issue. That's, Ray, that's all of them asked, asked the question. So, that's, this 280 is all upper and lower lots. Shelburne, the kitchen is not up to code, needs to be dealt with. It's got, we need some parking there. Allenbrook, so this is an interesting one. So, they, the fire line system needs to upgrade, but the bottom one here is $50,000 for a really strong architect analysis of that building and what we can do with it. Allenbrook's got a couple of problems. It's a definite open concept building, which is sort of not, it's what Shelburne and Williston just corrected or changed, to not being quite so open concept. It also causes some security issues, got a big open building. So, looking at that, and Williston is facing some real pressure on growth, and we need to figure out if we can fix that building in a way that maybe we can make room for a few more kids in that building. So, a lot of work there. This is the upper bound of what the architects would do that for, but we need to wrap our arms around what to do with Allenbrook. It's, it's, building's twenty, a little over 20 years old. It shouldn't need major physical upgrades, but it needs progeratic upgrades. So, that's what we are currently proposing. I'll be back with this when we have, we talked about the bond in January.
Jean, you've got a lot of paving, and I know on the other one, there was paving. Is the assumption that we're going to bid that all to one company?
Yes.
Can you explain the, the five-year capital plan and a $6 million bond? I'm assuming that, for example, for Charlotte, it would probably be a 20-year bond, maybe?
Yes, yes.
So, can you explain the five-year versus the bonding amount?
No, that's a good question. So, what my facilities directors have is a five-year plan. So, it's about that big. And on there is everything, everything the building needs. Stuff that they'll pay for out of their own budgets, stuff that they'll pay for out of the prior page, and stuff that there's no way we'll ever get to if, if without a bond. So, it's a five-year plan, and this is the capital, it's a five-year capital plan, this is the bond parts of it.
This, this is the bond request for, a proposal for some article in March.
Right.
By ballot.
Yep.
Is there any way, and I'm not getting, I don't want to get into the weeds on parsing out, you know, what needs to go into different articles and so forth, but has there been consideration, and I would advocate for the finance committee to think about it, parsing out the bonds so that it's not an all or none? So that it's not one $6 million bond, and if it fails, everything stops? But, there's one bond. You see what I mean?
I do see what you mean. It's, yeah, because, because we do have to vote as an entire district.
Correct.
Right.
And I will just say that in Heinsberg, we had a very long tradition after, and this is going way back, after many years of the buildings, and Ray will remember this, after many years of the buildings being neglected, we finally, after multiple years of working on it, were able to pass bond, did renovation project, and the community supported continuing to address different issues in the building, buildings, you know, it's like a pinwheel building. Over time, Jen is familiar with this too, and we were having separate articles on almost a yearly basis for specific projects, so that people in the community could see this particular article will support replacing the roof in the 52 wing, or whatever it might be. And it gave people the opportunity to say, I agree with this, or don't agree with this. And, I mean, we were very lucky in having our, all of the articles passed on a regular basis, but what it did is that it was more engaging, I think.
If I remember, when we spoke about consolidation and coming up with this sort of five-year plan and capital budget, it was exactly not to do that, because in Heinsberg, when you were doing that, it was localized to Heinsberg.
And what, that's a local list.
That's a local list to CBSD.
I, I understand that, but...
Well, so what I'm saying is by grouping it, is one bond for $6 million, and we bring it to the district. Everything is approved, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought my impression was as a St. George voter, you know, kid in Williston, Heinsberg or Charlotte needs something, I don't think that's a good time for the budget. Versus, this is a budget for CBSD, this bond incorporates all of this money for these particular projects to be earmarked.
Yeah, I mean, when we were, went through the consolidation planning and so forth, we had talked about moving to a point where we might have something like a $2 million, $2 million bond every year. You know, like, to start planning on it, that every year, you're going to be seeing a $2 million bond, or whatever it might be. $6 million, kind of, I think it's, it's moving in the right direction from my perspective of, of, you know, my bias of trying to continue to address particular issues. But, it's a big number. It's a very big number for people who might not be familiar with thinking about facilities as being part of an educational program or whatever.
But, if a five-year capital plan, it's less than the $2 million a year that you were speaking of, right?
Well, this would be like, I'm thinking like every, I was hoping, I was, my, my thought was like $4 million every three years, but unfortunately, we have a couple of big needs that are $4 million to get, to get there.
My understanding was originally that Charlotte need wasn't four and a half, it was closer to two, so it would have been a smaller bond, but my understanding is that Charlotte needs a lot of bare necessities that you can't keep waiting and waiting and waiting on, and that's why that number is, is where it is?
Well, the total number is over 10.
Right, right, totally. But, which is why you can't, we can't only do, like, to get that down to a $2 million bond, which is, I think, what you're, what I'm hearing you say, not to have it so big.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that when we talked about it originally, we had talked about moving to a multiple-year capital plan where people would start becoming familiar with seeing money going into capital funding, and it doesn't necessarily need to be spent that particular year, but we would start building a capital budget that would address a multi-year plan. And we had talked about, you know, whatever the number is, but a smaller number that just became part of the program.
Maybe we just have to place some ketchup and get buildings at a certain level before we can, can do that.
I think there's a danger of putting a $6 million article out there and having it voted down, and then you can do nothing.
But, we've kicked Charlotte downward in the sense of, I, I'm not surprised by this, because we were talking about Charlotte pre-consolidation and what needed to be done in Charlotte, and how Charlotte as an individual school system wouldn't have been able to afford that level of...
Yeah, I'll just say one more thing. I'm not arguing against the need. I'm arguing for political strategy to make sure that you can do something.
It sounds like you want a backup plan, if there, or, or like maybe lead with the backup plan.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I, I would hesitate, because I think, calling that I'm hearing what you were saying about, like, just presenting it as a whole $6 million, but if we presented it as several different bonds, and then some, at least if, if, if the whole $6 million was going to be voted down, at least we can get some stuff going. The only thing that, I think it's going back to your point, is that I do think because we're a consolidated district, that we need to be presenting everything as a consolidated presentation of $6 million, because I also, like, I could see being a Williston resident, oh, my kid, my kids are only in Allenbrook right now, okay, so there's a bond for, for CBU. I don't really care about CBU right now. Or, there's, there's this big, big ask for, for Charlotte, but like, ah, I don't, I don't know about that, especially because there's going to be a $1 million bond to fix the road in Williston that goes into South Burlington. And so, like, I'm not, I'm not going to vote for that, but if there's a $6 million bond in front of me, and I know it's going to directly go to benefit some schools that I have kids in, then I'm more like, I think I'd be more likely to vote for the $6 million bond, $6 million bond than like several small bonds. Because you might get overwhelmed. Like, at least in Williston, there's most likely going to be a bond for the road that got taken out that now has backed up traffic. There's going to be the bond for the buses. There's, and I mean, these are all individual bonds, but it starts to add up, and it can kind of like weigh on you, and you're like, how many of these do I need to say yes to? I, just as a strategic, like, I just, I, I think that there's...
Well, and this one... Maybe, I, I'm just, I want to say the...
The construction committee, but both of the people are here, but are they, are they meeting before our next meeting?
The day before.
The day before. I'm just wondering, because they're meeting with the architects and you guys, and...
Oh, oh, the, oh, I'm sorry, the facilities committee? Yeah, they'll be meeting.
Before the, the next meeting. I mean, I'm just wondering to take, to bring that, bring this discussion back to either facilities or the construction committee, and see if there are any other, any other options. Because I hear you, we're asking for a big increase in the budget and a $6 million, million dollar bond, and...
Four and a half million dollars, and we have had zero, zero discussion about the Charlotte building.
Well, that's coming.
As a board.
It's, that's coming. That's coming in January. The architects are coming. They're going to tell us...
I have...
Community-wise, she's...
Yeah, maybe it's a thought of, do you think that the strategery, if I quote an Austrian...
I have never gone to voters for a very large amount of dollars for a bond without having had multiple months of chewing on something.
Right. Which was Dave's point as well?
Yeah, it sounds like it could come down to a communication, the, the strategy needs to be in the communication. All of this needs to be done. All of this costs money, so maybe, and I know that we, our budget communication efforts have not been particularly well-received or attended, or... our budget communication efforts have not been particularly well-received or attended, or, I don't know what, but I don't know if it's how you can present it on the ballot. That's when people are getting, that's probably going to be the first time that a lot of voters are hearing about this, or encountering this ask. I don't know if you can list like, you get for the low, low price of $6 million, look what you could do.
All I'm doing is sharing my prior experience.
Yeah, which I totally respect, I'm just wondering what the, it...
We'll give it some thought.
What the options might be.
That's the bond, it's not 60 million, it's not 220.
But we don't spend until we have discussion, anyway, right? I mean, that's always been our practice.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I mean, you're asking, this is the...
We'll come back in January with this, this list finalized. What I'm hearing from the board is perhaps another option, that, for a number that's different, that's smaller. Maybe two bonds, I mean, I'll talk to the architect, I'm buying half an envelope if that would make any sense. Or if, you know, our recommendation is really, we want to go for the whole thing, so, but...
Maybe non-vote in November.
If, if, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot, there are a lot of things that you can discuss.
Right.
You know, if the issue is communicating with the communities, doesn't have to be in March.
When you look at this again, because it sounds like you're going to go through and look, look at this again, if we're going to delay anything, we need to understand what the cost of delay is. So if we're going to delay phase one and do it in two sections, most likely, the overall cost will be greater than if we just put 4.5 million into it right now.
Well, the whole $10 million is going to be more, because it's going to be over nine years, right?
Yeah, but if we do it five times versus once, it's going to add up.
I think it's, I suspect on the Charlotte one, it's just going to be more a matter of how did you half the envelope of the building? So, but that would be something we...
New sign?
Yes, finally.
Actually has our, oops, actually has us on there, the right words. Not inside the building, that still says CSU, but little baby steps. Because we, we don't own that building, we, we're tenants, so we have to work with our landlord. So, no change in central office, staffing. We do, well, the staffing here, we do have the, this is where the equity audit response money is. There's one reason it's up. We also, the HRA, FSA fees are in here, this is the fees for managing that whole thing, that's, that's in this number, and they're up. We've added some personnel management software, which just shows up in the HR budget, and our insurance is up. So, so those are the drivers. Any questions? We normally do a sort of a comparison with other school districts. We thought we'd get to cycle doing that like every other year, since it's, it's a lot of work, and, and it was, looked good last year. That's it.
Does anyone have any questions specific to tonight's presentation?
Oh, that's right, sorry, I forgot one slide. Just a reminder that, not done, done, there are next steps. The next meeting, we will talk about revenue. A lot of the budget adjustments that we've been doing, oh, there's about 400 of them, I think, are, are, you know, we've been trying to do them on the back of an envelope. So Mike Nadeau is currently working on loading them all into MUNIS, so we can double-check that they're right. There are some numbers that we're still waiting for from the state. We haven't, the VHI healthcare number has not been approved by, oh, Mark's left. The statutory organization is that has to approve those health increases, we don't have that number yet. And then any other budget adjustments, as requested by, that's the work that we'll do before the next time.
So that last piece there is, I'll try and say this better this year. So it would be really helpful for the administration to know if, if the board as a whole feels like we're on the right track, if they're on the right track with the budget, or if we want to take a totally different direction, or partially different direction. I'm not advocating for any or all. I just think it's helpful for admin to know, so they can either enjoy their holidays or spend their holidays chugging numbers.
That'd be the same thing for me.
That'd be the same thing, yeah, but you enjoy the numbers, so. So I guess I'd just like a general sense from the board, and maybe, can you, can we go back to that very first, it was her budgets, the very, one of her, it had the overall budget on it, I think.
The administrative budget proposal?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, that would be, that's good. Are people feeling...
You want the tax one, or the, that one?
Uh, wait, what was the tax one? Yeah, that one.
Jocelyn says she's got it.
They'll change the form... They'll change the formula, so don't worry. So our, what are people's, do people have concerns? Do they have questions? Do they, are they comfortable?
Need more information.
Do you need more information?
This is kind of a weird question, and I should be able to know it by looking at this, but do we have, for an equalized tax rate, how many dollars is one penny?
It was in the tax commissioner's letter.
If you wanted to go from like 3.9 to 3.8, it's $100,000.
Okay.
On our ta, on our tax, on our budget.
Yeah. So I'm just thinking five less, five buses last year, this year, two, three less buses. So that's about 200, 250, $300,000 or something? It was 485, what's that?
It's the loan.
Okay, oh, I'm just thinking on the tax rate, yeah.
Penny, this is from the tax commissioner's letter. It says, Penny Rule of Thumb for FY21, one penny on the tax rate translates to $20 on a $200,000 house.
I love when they change units.
One penny on the tax rate translates to $20 on a 20, a $20 increase on a $200,000 house. But, but to Jean and Colleen's point, we don't control, we don't control the yield, we don't control anything. The only thing we control is the equalized per pupil cost. And so, you know, we're looking at a increase of 3.9% right now with somewhat final, maybe, weighted students, so... Where's Russ when we need him? He'd get the, he'd get the conversation started.
I mean, I need more information, but I think that the budget is really solid as someone who's been sitting in the finance committee and looking at the numbers. There's some questions I have about, you know, detailed programming questions, like for special ed, I have like a little red flag that the number is, is going up, but I feel like that's, those are numbers that can be better explained, and we'll get into some of that. But generally, overall, I feel the budget has been well-presented, and the positions that they're asking, that we've been discussing tonight earlier on, seem, seem reasonable, it doesn't seem exponential. We've been holding the ship pretty steady for the past couple of years, past three or four years, even through consolidation. So I don't see this as a major surprise. That's my two cents, I don't think we need Russ.
No, I just said, he'd get the conversation started.
Where is Russ?
He's, he's not here tonight, he's dealing with end-of-year stuff.
He's at the part test. I made the mistake of looking at the annual snapshot on my phone. I was like, over, scrolling over, like, and I need to actually sit down with it on my largest screen available.
Does anyone have a sense of where we are? I, I, I kind of wanted to use that to think, to, as, as context for the budget. And I don't know if those, if there, if it's actually helpful in that way. Well, you could do a, a weird walk, I guess, and you could look at our equalized per pupil cost, which for a school our size, I think we kind of fit right in the middle of things.
The whole state.
Right. In the whole state, and then I guess you could look at test scores for schools our size, or even...
And like schools.
And like schools, and find that we're up here. So actually, there's a value, I think, isn't there a return on investment piece, but not...
Cost, cost of investment, or what was it called?
What's one of the indicators? R, isn't it a...
It's return on investment.
And I think it's, it's the value, they're trying to calculate the value. And I actually do think, on the snapshot, it says that we do provide a high value for our kids. It's an interesting way to describe the education, but I, I guess I look at it as we're kind of middle of the state in spending, but we get above-average results. But that's how I guess I would do it. Yeah, that's, that's... That's just my opinion. That's what, sort of the, what I was trying to figure out, that was a tool, a handy contextual tool. Well, where do you get those tables that the state puts out? We have to, we have to provide the information, do we still, and we have to publish it in our annual reports? Which information? The ones that talk about, you know, costs, and, um, per pupil costs and staffing ratios and all of that. Remember, we, we used to have to publish that, do we not have to do that anymore?
Minor no, but...
That was a town by town.
You still can get that information on the AOE website. I don't know if it's, if you'd find it in the dashboard, or if you just have to look, school data, and then scroll down. And there are ways to see our, all of the schools. You can like sort it out by schools over 2,000. And you can look at K8 schools over, you know, 500. There are different ways that you can look at it, and then it will just disaggregate just those schools, so you can see what the ratios are.
Because I was trying to think of, I was struck by something, I think it was Russ who said, uh, two weeks ago, I'm not comfortable with this increase, and that, and I don't, I don't want to make a decision based on my personal comfort level in this area, so I wanted a fuller picture of where we stand in kind of like spending per pupil, and, and then, yeah, cross-reference it with...
So that one we do know, though, our spending per pupil is average for the state, which is good if you're in Chittenden County, because we pay teachers way higher in Chittenden County than they do in the rest of the state. So our 80% of the budget, that is salaries, is bigger than other people in the rest of the state. So for us to be at the average, I've always taken as, you know, a good thing, really good thing.
There's not, you know, really, if you look at the overall budget... There's a lot of status quo in it, you know, we have gas, we have the staff that's been here forever. The add and the ask from the administration, I feel is mo, is very modest compared to the problems that they're experiencing, that I don't think that they were experiencing, you know, 10 years ago. And those problems are the things that we read about every day, opiate crisis, you know, higher level of depression and obesity in our children, you know, all of those things. So I, the, the, there's, you know, I was on the, I'm on the finance committee, and there's just not a lot of wiggle room in this budget, I feel.
Per context, you know, because you don't know what the other schools' budgets are being proposed for this year right until after they wrote it on, on town meeting day. But in the tax commissioner's letter, the average equalized per pupil spending projected for FY20, for this budget statewide, is $17,133, and we're at $16,701. So... Just, you know, we're not shrinking, we're not a shrinking school system, and that definitely, definitely helps.
Jocelyn wants...
Oh, sorry. Finance committee, we meet regularly. We were meeting two times after the first year. I, I need to blame someone, right? Blame our chair. So last week, when we were meeting in the finance committee, I think I said something along the lines of, I just, I feel like we are living in a time that requires things that go beyond, like, like all the positions that we're asking to, we're being asked to add, like to fund. Our, well, the one, there's the one and a half FTE for the early literacy. It's unfortunate that the way that they decide how people get that funding is decided the way that it is, with us being this unified district, where if one, if one town, if one school has a couple kiddos who get more free reduced lunch, it affects the other schools, and so we lose that funding, it's really unfortunate. And I don't know that any, I don't know that our district would support us taking that, those services out of that school. And then when I'm thinking about the, the add of the 1.8 for the essential arts, and then the 2.0 add to CVU, especially with regards to, to the adds for CVU, I think that it's going to support just the stress that is on our schools to be meeting the needs of the social-emotional health of our students that just now is just common for everything that our kids are facing in society. And so although, I, I think I said something like, although our, our cost per pupil maybe necessarily isn't like going through the roof, the need is still really there. And so I can say that I, I'm not really surprised by the numbers that we're seeing. I think the overall increase of 1.7, I think, makes sense with everything that is going on. I really appreciate Central Office coming back and explaining what will happen if we don't add the FTEs, and then if we, and if we do, how we'll be able to measure. I think that that was really helpful. And I actually, I also think it's really unfortunate what we have going on with the health insurance. I thought that my husband, who pays for health insurance through his company, I thought it was going up by 10.1%, it's actually going up by 15.2%. So we're doing, doing okay, I guess, at 13.1. So I just, I think it's, I think we're not facing anything necessarily unique to what most Vermonters, I think, are facing right now. And so I, I don't think anyone will be that surprised, especially if we can do a good piece of educating and making sure people know why the numbers are the way that they are. I, I think that our community will support this budget.
I just want to channel one of Russ's comments from the last time that we met. And that was the question about, and maybe Ray was contributing to this conversation as well, about the additional positions. Is it rightsizing the organization, or is it a trend of continuing increasing? You know, so that, so that the increase that we're seeing this year, is it because we had backed off perhaps too much over the past couple of years, and now we're rightsizing the ship, or is this a trend? So I, I think that...
Well, good we said that tonight. If we didn't, then my chart isn't as good as it should have been.
Mm-hmm. Ray, did that, was that kind of your point from the last time we met?
I fear that it's just going to continue to grow, which all organizations tend to do.
And, and so I guess my, my question would be, that would be part of the narrative that we would need to understand, is related to the number of positions, if that makes sense.
One of, one of the conversations we had as a finance group was, you know, exactly what you said, Colleen, that's, you, you put it beautifully, when, when does the growth stop? So, you know, when does, when do we get to, when do we get to a place where we're not investing so much year and after year? And last year, we didn't invest that much. We set pretty aggressive goals, and when I sat down with Jean a few times through different conversations with the finance committee, we're achieving those goals really quick. And I think that as we achieve those goals, we're going to be at a, at a place where, and if you guys disagree, please let me know, but we're going to be at a place that when we add staff, it's going to be because of increased enrollment, or needs that we're not foreseeing right now. You know, I think that, you know, Adam has done a great job putting together, you know, this is what we have, this is what we used to have, and this is where I need to be to support the kids from a social-emotional perspective. Unless there's a huge change at the high school, I don't expect to have that same conversation next year.
So, I mean, my, my understanding, and I would need help understanding what the committee thinks, is that the first few years of our budget as a consolidated district was perhaps a bit too aggressive in reducing...
Yes.
You know, trying to have this goal of being able to be more efficient. Because I, I know, like for Central Office, those folks worked so hard and would probably use three more people full-time just in that... use three more people full-time just in that central office. So I know that people work really hard in this district. And so, if, you know, the Finance Committee come back to us, I want to hear that perhaps the first few years of our budget, we were a bit too aggressive.
I think one, one thing to consider when you make that statement, Colleen, is that for the last two years, we were at 2.3 and 2.7, and the average in the rest of the state was high threes and fours. And so, I said to Jean at the end of last year, I am nervous about this, because, right, we're not different than the rest of the world. We have kids, we have teachers, we have programs, that we are able to keep at this low means that like the stars all align, but that's not going to last forever, and I am worried about that. And then I think about the, the positions that Adam is asking for at the high school, it is rightsizing. They did have four house directors back when they had this many students, six years ago or something, or eight years ago.
And guidance position, we cut a guidance position about the same.
And cut a guidance position at the same time, so that is really rightsizing. And add to that the fact that the business is harder today. Kids come to us way more, what's the word that we use when we're meeting with our, with all of the faculties, they're just.
Broken.
They're not ready for the learning, I mean, really, it's, it's sad. And so, we're the ones who have to provide, dysregulated, that's the word I was trying to think, they're coming to school way more dysregulated.
So, if the Finance Committee has looked at, you know, I really value multiple years of numbers so that we can look at trends and patterns and comparisons, and it's, it's really hard when we just have a number put in front of us without the context of that. So if the Finance Committee or administrators can help us create context for this budget, to help us with our narrative for the community, that would be really helpful. And I'd be happy to talk details offline.
Yeah, and Bonnie's been sitting in every single one of our Finance Committee meetings that we drag her to. So, you know, she has a really good understanding.
Makes us feel better that she has.
Yeah. So she, she's, she's going to take point in putting that communication together and making sure that as a committee, we're achieving the goals and the communication goals that we set forth in the beginning of the work that we did with this budget. And we have that timeline, which maybe if you could send around to everybody again just to refresh the memory, and that way you can see exactly what we're doing and how we want to communicate out.
I'm trying to remember, does that timeline give us time to have some input?
Discussion as a board, so that we can tweak things before we're putting them out to the community or presenting on town meeting nights?
I would say I don't remember off the top of my head, but I can't imagine that we would put together a communication plan without giving the opportunity for the board to provide input.
And for the presentations that many of you do for select boards and at the schools or at town meeting, that's something that we create and then share it with you to make it unique and appropriate for each town.
If people wanted to come in and let's talk about how we're going to present this, we could do that. I think it, I think that it's important for us to know before people leave for tonight, like, are you kind of feeling like you support the budget at where it is or not? Because our work doesn't start after the holidays, it starts tomorrow morning. If you're saying that it's.
Do it with like our thumbs.
Yeah, yeah, it could just be a thumbs up, thumbs down, but I think it's really important because we can't wait till January to then start working with the principals and say, guess what, we're looking for, because.
I'm comfortable with it, but I need the full context, I need to be able to say we had cut the budget too much over the past three years, or whatever it was, and we're rightsizing.
So let's break this up into two separate things. Let's, first thing is, let's put thumbs up or thumbs down on how you feel about the budget, because we need to determine if we need to tell Elaine and Jean to go back and do something different. And then we'll have a conversation about, you guys have seen the numbers, we approved the numbers as they are, what do you, what do you guys, what does everybody need to be comfortable in selling this to their community? Is it, does everybody think that that's fair?
And given that the thumbs up doesn't mean I'm really, really happy with 3.9, I don't, I know nobody's happy with 3.9, it's just the reality of salary and healthcare benefits.
I mean, I just, I need to say, because, you know, we, we gave you a quantitative goal, and you've, you've met it. And so, it's really hard to come back and say, well, no, now we really want you to change it, it still seems high, I still worry about people in our community, some who may be sending their dysregulated kids to our school. It's a, it's a big change for our community, it's a big budget increase, and I, I do think about that. I, I think the context will help, we changed our model this year, which is why, partially, that is one of the reasons why there is a big increase, we added a different, another component to it. Going forward, maybe we look at the model again, who knows? I, I don't want to get into whether we should or we shouldn't, I'm just saying, we gave you a goal, you met it, it's kind of hard to, to, to turn the tables this late in the game.
Yeah, no, I was, I was going to say, from my understanding, and I don't decide what goes in the budget, I just, except for the last part, I just figured out how to help explain it, this is the budget you would see no matter what target you gave us, because this is the target, this is the education that we need. We would have to come and say, we can't do 2.7, we need this number. So I don't think there's anything, it's like, woo-hoo, we got budget, let's just go for it. Which just as a reminder, is exactly what Elaine had to do last year. Right. She had to come to us and say, the number that you gave me, I can't do that number, this is where, this is where we're at, to have the quality of education that we want our kids to have.
But can we, at this point, at this juncture, can we get?
Well, is there anyone who has, anyone else that wants to speak on the budget, who hasn't had a chance to speak?
To Colleen's point about are we righting our ship? I don't, I wouldn't say we were restrained so much in our last few years of our budgeting as much as we were cautionary, in the sense of we were, we were actively engaged in consolidation. We didn't know what resources we had, we didn't know how programs or merged programming was going to take place. I actually feel like now in this budget, and I, I don't, I don't mean to pick on one piece of the budget, it's just sticking in my head, that like a 7.5 increase, right, for, for a program, well, that's something that I'll watch, like this year, I want to see, it's, it's not to me, will a principal come for five more positions next year, it's, okay, here's a chunk of the budget that I see as, that, that we can affect change with, and we can manage this, and is there something that can be managed better within this, and how are we doing this? And so, that, that, those kinds of elements are what I'll be looking at going forward.
And I keep having, I have stuck in my head something, a phrase that you said, Brendan, I think, the cost of delay.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, so I, I keep thinking about that in terms of the, the positions that have been, that we've been asked to add, and how, it's not something we can assign a dollar amount to for, in that case, but I know that it's a price I wouldn't want to pay, you know?
With our most precious commodity in the community, our children.
Does anyone else have any, anything that'd like to add?
I'm on the Finance Committee, so.
But, yeah, you're good.
Kate, what would you do?
I don't know. I mean, I've always grown up in a world where you just say yes to everything that's education-based, so.
I like that.
I'd just vote it yes.
Ma'am, yes ma'am.
It's just all up to vote now, right? You all up to vote yet? Okay, let's redo.
Excellent, there we go, okay. All right, so I'm, I'm getting a sense from everyone on the board that.
We move forward with this.
We're moving forward with this. Okay. All right. Anything else? Kelly, you said you had specific questions, did you want to email those to Brendan?
Oh, no, I, I meant like going forward.
Okay.
You know, I wouldn't, not about.
The issue?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Big picture programming.
Big picture, yes, like if I'm seeing things that are exponential going up, why are they going up? What are we doing? Now we've merged, now we've consolidated, the programming aspect, why is this happening? How much control do we have if we're bringing this in-house, and we're still paying contractors to cover services, why is that happening? Those kinds of questions come with that.
Okay.
Move to the chairman.
Well, we're getting there, my friend, hold on, I don't want anyone to miss the next meeting, so the next meeting, well, Finance will meet every night over vacation. Finance does meet on January 6th, but the next budget meetings are the 7th and the 21st. And, and if your committee does meet, which indicators we might consider meeting, just let Jane know. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.